Okay, moving on, the next item is approval of the agenda. Does anyone have anything they'd like to add or alter on the agenda?
I would like to make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Support.
Moved and supported to approve the agenda as submitted. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. The next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of November 11.
So moved.
All support.
Moved and supported to approve the minutes for the meeting of November 11. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. The next item is the financial report on the table in front of you. The one page had an error, so it was corrected. See now I have the corrected page to go with it.
What was the error?
Americana states. The total number remained the same because it was added upright, but individually, it put the wrong number on the sheet. Okay, we have to begin.
Nine fifty-four it should be.
Okay, all right, yeah, I see.
Okay. We started the month with $251,831. We had receipts of $71,883. We had dispersals of $38,992. We have a net balance of $284,722.75.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the financial report as submitted.
Support.
Moved and supported to accept the financial report as submitted. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. The next item is correspondence. Item A, St. Clair County Homeland Security. Mr. Russ Decrees is here. He's going to give a short presentation on the warning information notification system. Mr. Decrees.
Thank you for having me here this evening. For the record, I am Russ Decrees from the St. Clair Office of Homeland Security Emergency Management. And what I'm here to talk to you about this evening is our warning information notification system. Going through it real quick, there's three parts to it. The first one and the only part that we're really interested in is the actual emergency part. Number one, emergencies can be either life or safety, for instance, tornadoes. In this particular township, there is not enough tornado sirens to notify the residents. This can automatically, in that type of a situation, physically call home phones, cell phones, text messages for the hearing impaired TTY devices and let them know that we're under a tornado warning or there is a tornado that's actually touched the ground in this area. Some of the other emergencies would be if there is a barn fire and there is a toxic substance in it such as fertilizer, things of that nature. Or if there's some type of police emergency. I know that there is one mobile home community in the township. If there's a police situation like a barricaded government, notifications could go out to the citizens saying, "Remain specifically in your houses. Do not come out. It is, you know, a life-threatening issue." In addition to the true life and safety emergency issue, there's a couple other sides to it. There is a lot of different things that people can sign up for if they choose to. Everything from different weather warnings, marine warnings for the farmers, the frost warnings, several county entities such as the health department, the sheriff's office, they do have an area on there, excuse me, as well as every village, township, and city within the county itself. The township would be responsible for putting out any non-emergency announcements. Those could be anything from the things that are in the newsletter to if you're going to have major road closures over an extended period of time, all of the counties responsible for the roads. The county doesn't do as good a job as we would like of getting the notice out to the residents, and it's just going to be out for the next four months. It can also be used for any type of public safety issues, reminder to change the battery in the smoke detector, you know, all that kind of stuff, as well as any other things that your community has. Third side, which probably I don't see this township using because you don't have a lot of employees, is an internal side where, for instance, if you were to have a snow emergency and you had a township meeting scheduled for that night, you could actually send out a poll and say, "Are you able to make it to the township to have a quorum tonight?" Yes or no, and you can either know right off the bat whether it's worth having a meeting or to call the meeting. You know, anything that doesn't obviously run up against the Open Meetings Act, but that type of question can actually be sent out and the responses can be done on the internal side. This system here, it's not a county government system. This is a system for the entire county. We're using a grant to cover it entirely until October of 2016, and then we'll be asking all of the communities to participate and provide some type of support. Because this is a more rural community that does not have water, does not have police or fire, although I cannot tell you what your financial commitment would be at this time, I can tell you that it would be substantially less than a thousand dollars a year. The actual cost would be given to you in the beginning of 2016, and at that point in time, you would make the decision and tell us that yes, we are interested in continuing or no, we are not. Until that time, the system is completely free. It's, you know, open for the township's use as well as emergency with no cost or commitment. We would ask that the township put it in the link for people to sign up on their website. When you do the assessments come March, we would ask that you put it in the assessments to get the word out because obviously the system is only as good as the people who sign up for it. For the true emergency situations, we already have 40,000 households in the county. That's about 60% of the county, but we can only use that for true emergency purposes. We can't use that for anything that's not life or safety. The public signup, we're hoping to probably get at least another 25% of the community. We've had the public signup going for approximately one week, and we have about 1,000 people right now already. That's basically the system in a nutshell. Are there any questions?
Well, when Mr. Decrees came in, we kind of talked it over basically correctly. On our website, what would happen is we would put a link, and then people would hit that link and end up going there to your site and be able to sign up. Is that correct?
Correct, but let me just change one little thing. Your website is not sending them to Homeland Security's website. It's sending them directly to the signup page. So this is truly a community system. This is not something where you're sending them to our website.
To the...
To the signup page.
Right. And then they can choose whether to sign up and how they would like to be notified. And to my knowledge, every township in the county but one is going to go on. In the update, I mentioned there was four areas: public safety, roads, general announcements, and recreation. And there was a supervisors' meeting last week, and a couple of people I talked to said that for right now, the public safety is already in. Correct?
I'm sorry, you're referring to the county sheriff and...
Yeah, because, you know, we would have no input really on the public safety.
The county sheriff is going to be a participant on the site, but they're not going to notify the township residents if they're having a number of beanes that are occurring in the area. If that's going to occur, that would be incumbent on the township to do that, and they would have to contact with the sheriff.
They don't even notify us when there's a number of beanes in the area.
Yeah.
So...
But a couple of them said they were just going to go for now with the general announcement. And the life and death stuff's already in place.
Correct.
But all they have currently are the phone numbers that are in the book. So if tomorrow there was a tornado here, they could call everybody whose path it was in right now. That's already in place.
That's correct.
If your number's in the phone book. So, and we could change if we decided to just go with the general announcement, we decided six months down the road, we want to change to something else or add something, we could do that, correct?
Absolutely.
What do you need from us now?
The only thing, not specifically from this body, because I don't know whether this is something that because of the way the township is set up, this would be a vote of the body, or I don't know that, but what we would like is, number one, the township's support and to put it on the website as well as to publicize it in any way possible. And then after tonight, I'll get back with you and find out who is going to be authorized for the township to put out announcements for the township, but that's not something that we have to do here this evening.
Because there is no money taking...
There is no cost, there is no commitment, there is nothing to sign.
I don't know if we need a motion versus just a consensus.
I think he needs to know who's the official who has the right to put out.
Well, it would probably be Patty because she's the one that deals with the website the most. But he'll have to come in and talk to you and see.
That again, I personally don't think that that has to be decided tonight. We could probably have a conversation.
Well, we can work on that. Well, once the link is established, there's not that much to it on our part other than if you want to add something to your website that will carry over.
The only thing, once we get the categories, you know, for the township established on the website, the only thing would be when you want to actually send out an announcement or an alert. That would be the only thing additional the township would have.
And what would trigger that? Is that preset?
That's up to you.
Or we could go on there and say, "Send it out."
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
So if you did a mid-year newsletter, you could go on there after we have it on our website, go on there and say, "Send that out."
Absolutely, but that is obviously an internal discussion that has to be made and an internal decision. We don't want to have control over what the township is sending out to the residents.
Understand.
Mr. Decrees, who runs this system? Does your office run this?
We're the administrators on the system. We, for the most part, will not physically be out of the system unless there is a true mass emergency. Both dispatch centers within the county are on the system for the true emergencies, like I mentioned, you know, a police emergency or a fire emergency. The first responders would actually contact dispatch, and dispatch would be sending it out.
When you says that when the grant money runs out and you'll become the communities, you said a thousand dollars a year is per community or...
Yes, but I said it would be substantially less than a thousand dollars considering the size of the city. But yes, obviously, the larger cities that have water, police, and fire would be considerably more. Bottom line is, in order to sustain it after 2016, the cost of the system is $45,000 a year. That's the bottom line. And if we have enough communities that opt in, then the system will continue.
More communities that are in it, the lower the cost per community.
Absolutely, and we're also bringing a lot of school districts on as well as other things, and then hopefully we'll again lower the costs.
How do you organize your data so that you can target an individual school district?
There's several different ways. First of all, when somebody goes to the actual signup page, they pick and choose what it is that they want to sign up for. For instance, you mentioned schools. They would actually have to go to the school area and pick the specific schools or the school districts that they want to get announcements on. The second way is in a true emergency like a tornado, we're not going to notify the entire county. This is not a blast system. We have the ability to go on a map and literally draw a circle around the area that we want to notify, so it is very specifically targeted. It can be targeted down to a block level if necessary.
Could I ask a question?
Who said that?
Say, could I ask a question?
Sure.
No.
What's the difference between yours and my Sims? My Sims is statewide and yours is countywide, is that the difference or...
My Sims is not really intended to contact each individual resident about very specific things that are happening in their community. This will actually call every phone number or text message that we have access to. So for instance, in a true emergency like a tornado, as of today, we can hit 60% of the residents in the county. My Sims does not have that capability. My Sims is more of a alerting the emergency responders.
Okay. You guys have an inclination? Do you want to just go with the general announcement to start and see how it...
Sure, I mean, yeah.
Sounds like we're right here in school.
Yeah.
We'll see how it works out.
Stuff, I mean, also too, I mean, like for Marine City Highway, I mean, or I-94 for spills and stuff like that, that would be...
Well, if it happens, you know, like a spill is really quick, if it's life-threatening, they already got it covered.
Right.
If they're going to close the highway for a number of weeks or something, we could put it on our website and it would be under the announcement if anybody signed up for that information, they would have it from there also.
Also too, like for elections and that, especially some of the elections, like your primaries that where...
Most of the information, though, assuming this could very well be on the website without this, but people may be more specific when they're signed up to something because you're not going to, you know, we go on there and say, "Notify them." You're going to call everybody that's on your signup list that wants a call?
It is automated. We don't physically pick up the phone and call anyone.
Right, the system would...
Correct. If you send out, if you send out an alert, depending upon how the people have chosen, they will get an email, a text message, or a phone call based on whatever you put in the announcement.
So even if it's a small thing, if they're signed up for it, and we say, "Send it out," maybe it gets sent out that way.
Absolutely.
Okay. Can you actually use the system to do polling?
You can only use it as a one-question poll. It does have the polling capability. For instance, I mentioned if you have a snowstorm, you can poll the board members to see if you're going to have a quorum, but it does not allow multi-question polls, so you can't put in a 20-question poll.
And automated voting? I'm looking at the private side because it is a whole list of things that...
That would apply in some circumstances for some organizations. It probably not would apply to the township because of the Open Meetings Act.
How would that work?
Quite literally, if you have a company that is not a public entity and not subject to the Open Meetings Act, they could actually have a one-issue vote on something. Again, that is much more for the private participants. I wouldn't see that necessarily applying at the township level.
So does your grant cover participation from private businesses now?
The only private entities that we're talking about might be some of the private schools and some of the quasi-governmental agencies such as Council on Aging and things of that nature, and some of those entities are not subject to the Open Meetings Act. So the actual voting would be probably restricted to those entities.
But in terms of use of the system for announcements, suppose you had a big plant, model plant or something, and there was some emergency there, could that, could they participate directly from that business to the employees of that business, or does it have to be by community? I mean, can a private entity, profit entity, use the system to do something?
Not through our contract. There are a number of very large private businesses that do use this same company. This company covers over half a billion people across the U.S., Canada, and the U.K. Under our contract, a for-profit entity would not be able to opt in as a partner.
But they could do it in other ways.
They could contact the company, absolutely, absolutely.
That's interesting.
You say half a billion for the U.S., Canada, and U.K.?
Correct. They cover over a half a billion people.
That must be the U.K. worldwide. It's not the U.K. anymore. You wouldn't get a half a billion people.
Well, no, 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 but that's installations throughout the United States, throughout Canada, and throughout the United Kingdom. So on those three continents where they have a footprint, they cover over a half a billion people. I don't know how many are in the U.K., how many are in the U.S. I think most are in the U.S.
Not a half a billion. Okay. So we'll move ahead on that. So you're going to get a hold of us then?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So it's the general consensus of the board to start out with the general announcements?
Right.
Okay, thanks for taking the time to come and see us.
Thank you for having me.
Okay, moving on. Item B, Richmond Lennox EMS Red Cross Blood Drive. Just put it on the agenda because we got the information, and the Richmond Lennox EMS is going to have a blood drive on January 6th, and it's going to be held at the Richmond Township Hall on School Section Road, and the time is 3:00 P.M. to 9:00 P.M. So we hope everyone that is able will help out. Okay, moving on. Old business on a new business. Item A, meeting dates for 2015, and they're listed in front of you, and it is the second Tuesday of each month.
You know, I actually, at first I had some reservations. Actually, now I kind of like it.
I'm with you. I really do like it.
Yeah, it doesn't conflict with the voting, with the blood rights.
Now I'm actually pleased with that. I had reservations at first.
It is confused at first, but...
At least you would have shut up the hall here. You just have to shut up twice.
We'd only had the whims, they could have notified by phone.
That's right.
Anyway, if you make a motion, make sure you include the time of date and the location, including the address of the hall.
I make a motion, we put the 2015 Casco Township Board of Commissioners meetings on the second Tuesdays. Do I have to read out every month's date?
No, I put second Tuesday.
Second Tuesday of each month of the year at 7:00 P.M. at Casco Township Hall.
Forty-five, twelve, Melvin Row.
Forty-five, twelve, Melvin Row, Casco Township, Michigan, four-eight-zero.
Six-four.
I'll support that.
Okay, moved and supported.
Okay, who supported it? Patty or Dan?
I think Patty was first. Moved and supported, set the meeting dates for 2015 for the second Tuesday of each month at seven o'clock at Casco Township Hall. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Item B, we have one vacancy occurring on the ZBA this year. It's a three-year term. Just first, I'd like to mention that Barb Cole served many years at Casco Township. She was on planning commissions, I believe, and ZBAs and other things, and she's decided it's time to retire, and we just certainly like to thank her for all her years of service. We really appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely, sir.
Okay.
How many years was she on?
You know, I didn't feel like pulling all, if you want to come in and look at all those minutes books, you got to go through...
Was Barb on the planning commission at one time?
I believe she was.
I think since I started, she's been here, and I've been here almost 30 years.
I would say, I would say over 20 years anyway. So it was a long time. But if you want to come in and look through all those old minutes books and find that out.
I'm not that curious.
Okay, so we have a one vacancy, it's a three-year term, and Mr. Dale Alagreen was asked, he would like to, newly retired, Mr. Dale Alagreen was asked if he would like to get on the ZBA, and he said he would. So I recommend the appointment of Mr. Dale Alagreen to the ZBA. Would you like to say anything, Mr. Alagreen?
Yeah, it's, uh, it sounds interesting. We'll see what it's all about. I've got time to do it, and, you know, it isn't that hectic of a schedule. Where you guys meet once a month or something, every three months?
Well, that's the odd part. Four or five years ago, they used to meet like a dozen times a year.
Well, there was a lot of building going on.
Well, in the last four, like three years, they met once for that. They have a quarterly meeting, but they only had really one hearing.
And how do you notify me if we have a...
Well, if there's a special meeting, you'll get it by mail.
Or my wife would...
If someone comes in, we set it up, and we set a meeting date.
Well, it sounds interesting. I'll give it a shot.
You'll learn a lot.
Dan here has been on much longer than I have. About two and a half years I served, I thought, very interesting. It was a good stepping, it was a good starting place to be in local government.
Well, right, it's interesting. We'll see how it goes, you know.
I'll move that we appoint Dale Alagreen to the zoning board for a three-year term.
I'll support it. Moved and supported. To appoint Mr. Alagreen to a three-year term on the ZBA. And it just...
Go ahead. I have a question, too. Should I abstain?
I think you should, as a Dan.
Probably.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
Okay, moved and supported. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining?
Abstaining.
Motion carries. I'll send you a bunch of stuff to read. I'll keep you busy for... Okay, moving on. Item C, border review appointments. As dictated by the old Michigan law, every two years, you have to appoint a complete border review. And all four members, we have three regular members and an alternate, have agreed to stay on. And they do a good job. They always come when the meeting is. They don't have any problem getting here, and I would strongly recommend that we reappoint these people. Now, there may be someone that would want to not vote for somebody because of a family relationship, so in the past, we've done it one person at a time.
Can we take a motion, just...
Yeah.
So we need a motion for each person.
We do?
Well, that's what...
We have, we have a quorum, so...
Yeah.
We could just do them all at once.
I can say do them all at once. Yep, can I abstain?
You can make any motion you want.
I'll make a motion that we appoint the current members, Roger Sloan, Chris Stevens, Robert Woselowski, and the alternate Diane Griswold for another two-year term on the border review, as the border review.
I'll support that.
Okay, moved and supported to appoint the three regular members and the alternate to the border review for a two-year term.
Would you object to doing it this way?
No.
Okay, good, same.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Oh, no.
Abstaining?
Yeah, abstaining.
Okay.
Hand went up too fast.
Motion carries. Okay, moving on. Item D, summer tax collection. The treasurer was unable to attend tonight, so I'm going to read what she told you last year because she told me it was the same thing. Casco will be collecting 100% of the summer taxes, Rees China, Richmond, the MISD, and RISA, and 50% for the Anchor Bay School Districts. Casco has agreed to receive $1 per parcel. The winter taxes can be paid at the Township Hall, the First State Bank, or the Bell River Credit Union until the date on the bill, because I didn't look it up, but it's usually the middle of February.
Does anyone else get a dog license, too?
You can get a dog license here at the Township Hall until the 1st of March. See what else I missed here? That's about it, only if you want to drop your bill off at the hall here and we're not open. There's a black drop box by the office entrance door, and just throw them in there and we'll get them. So that's about it for the tax collection. Okay, moving on. County drain assessments. Couple weeks ago, we got our county drain assessment for the year. The assessment for 2014 is $5,129.26. Two of the assessments are carried over two years, so the 2015 portion was $3,420.06. I recommend we pay them both. There is no interest charge by the county. There is no interest charged by the county, but when you're only making a quarter of a percent interest on your money in the bank, I would just get them paid off because there may be considerable work done on a couple drains in the coming year. I'd just like to get them paid off.
Now, these, are these for just general maintenance or?
Yes.
Okay.
I got the list from every drain if you want. This is just a summary of them. But there are two, four, or seven drains that were worked on this year, and I think the Peters Drain is going to get a lot of work. They may be starting before the end of the year, and hopefully, they're going to come to some decision on the Melvin Drain up here and get that situated. So those are both going to be considerable jobs.
Okay. I make a motion that we pay the county drain assessment for both the December 1st and 2014, December 1st, 2015, for a total of eight thousand five hundred and forty-nine dollars and thirty-two cents.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Moved and supported that we pay all the assessments for a total of eight thousand five hundred and forty-nine dollars and thirty-two cents. There isn't, these are the at-large assessments. The land assessment, which is what gets charged to all the landowners on the drain, because we own a couple little bitty pieces of the property, there is a small assessment, it's like five dollars. So I didn't put it on here to confuse it. That will get paid as it normally would for any landowner in their district. So is there any discussion on motion? Hearing none, a roll call vote, please.
Okay. Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Me? Yes. Bill?
Aye. Okay. Moving on. Item M, wage increase. In the office, we have two hourly employees. Last year, they did not get a wage increase, so I'm proposing that we get a twenty-five cent per hour wage increase starting January 1st and a twenty-five cent an hour wage increase on July 1st. The current wage, they currently make sixteen dollars an hour, and they've both been here a long enough period of time that they've reached the top scale on the personnel pay scale. So I think it's a reasonable amount and it's well-earned, so.
Very dedicated service to the township.
Is it sufficient?
Yeah. Yes.
Well, I got down here, what type of factor in the wages, the pension, Social Security, and the workers' comp, each person will cost the township six hundred and thirty-two dollars more next year than they did this year.
Small price for good people.
So.
I make a motion to approve the wage increase of twenty-five cents per hour for both Brenda Loper and Linda Teen.
Support.
Could you read that back?
I made the motion to approve the wage increase for both Brenda Loper and Linda Teen.
Okay. As outlined?
I did say twenty-five cents.
I know, but it's twenty-five twice.
I, twenty-five cents per hour, January and July. That's what it was.
That's fine.
January and July. Got it. For both myself and Linda.
Person seconded, that's fine with him.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I didn't think she said them both, so I didn't want to.
As long as it's clear as on the paper here.
Patty approved the twenty-five cent per hour raise increase for January and July for both BL and LT.
There you go.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, a roll call vote, please.
Okay. Bill?
Aye.
Pat? Joe?
Yes.
And Dan?
Yes.
Motion carries. The next item on my agenda is payment of the bills.
I make a motion that we approve the bills as submitted.
I'll second the motion.
Moved and supported to pay the bills as submitted. If there are any discussion? Hearing none, a roll call vote, please.
Okay. Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Pat? Yes. Bill?
Aye. Okay. Moving on. Citizens' comments. It's your opportunity to do whatever you feel like in regards to addressing the board. We request that you give us your name, but it's not mandatory. Anything from the audience there?
No comment.
No comment?
Are we getting the fall mice?
Huh?
Are we getting the fall mice?
Haven't seen any.
I noticed you have a do-it-yourself bug-storm.
Well, we had Terminix, okay? And they came every month. Cost us forty-two bucks a month.
Terminix.
Right. So every, every time the guy came, I went with him. I wanted to see what we're getting for forty-two bucks a month. Well, they got these sticky traps.
Right.
That's all he did, was he'd check them, and maybe once in a while, he'd put one up. So I canceled Terminix. So I looked online. Unfortunately, you can't buy one. They don't have them in the store to kind of want it. So for thirty-five dollars, you get seventy-five of them.
So now you're the match caster.
Well, so we got seventy-five, but if somebody comes in and would like them at our cost, we'll probably get rid of them, some of them, because I don't think we need seventy-five. We've got about maybe a dozen of them out.
They don't really get old.
Why don't you bring your puppies in? They'll look cute basically. I have my cat.
But it's more for spiders and bugs and stuff.
Bradley, she's a nice kitty.
So for less than one month of Terminix, we got ten years' worth of traps.
Good. Always looking for, well, you know, always looking for.
You got to get a cat, you know, a township pet and keep the mice out of there.
I think that's a good idea, have a little kitty.
Stress relief, you know?
Yeah. Oh, big stress relief. That cat would be petted so much.
How did the election workers did well?
The election workers did amazing, and we were just had our Clerk's Association Dinner, and we were really happy with the way the election went. Not only with the election workers that do most of the work, but also the people that supply us did an excellent job.
Since you operate in that field, is there, is there a big trend or a big consensus to keep with paper ballot, to have that tangible?
Not, we're not, right now, we don't, I see what you're saying. Right now, we are. It's just that we're going to make it more, like we now have e-poll books. I don't have to print up a big polling.
No, I mean.
Actually, as far as I know, the machines might be getting better, but as far as I know, it's still that.
I mean, you're about electronic voting.
Well, that's out there, Joe. But it's not.
Our servicemen people overseas vote electronic.
Yeah, but I.
Yeah, but that's still paper.
Yeah, it is.
It's still paper.
Yeah. I just worry when you have something existing in cyberspace versus a very, you know, a tangible ballot, if you count it. Just, just curious.
Yeah. So far, yeah.
Okay.
We're still there.
All right.
We're still there.
There have been some real questions about the e-poll system that was used heavily in Ohio and other states. People had some real doubts about what was.
Yeah.
Paper, paper, it can come. It's trouble, but it can come.
Yeah, it can.
Hanging chads is a lot.
Yeah, right. I mean, in August, it was a nightmare.
Will it come?
Well, we almost did. What happened was that a man had ran for office, and he was write-in vote, and we're showing all write-in votes. But he's going, "How come I'm not getting any votes?" Well, the way our system worked before was if you weren't on ballot, if you weren't a regular write-in, we didn't count you. We didn't do nothing. Well, that brought a lot of questionable things up. So now, we have to sit there at the end of the night, count them all out, write them down. Every name.
We had fifty-four write-ins.
People.
Invalid write-ins that people just.
That we have to sit there and count. So again.
All of them were invalid?
All of them were.
Well, if you don't declare a week before the election that you're a write-in candidate, you can't win from a write-in.
We only have. Mickey Mouse, Dow, Duck, all that kind of stuff.
Some put in their wife's name, some put in their husband's name, you know. You know, just ridiculous, and it really made a lot of work for my girls.
Like, gobble it all?
Yeah. Yeah.
They were there an hour long because of that.
Okay. Anyone else have anything?
Other than that.
What's the heater the most?
Heater.
That's the heater. No, actually, we haven't had a mouse in about two and a half years.
Yeah. Fascinate any of our cooking?
There was. It caused a lot of problems, but we'd have everyone clean up, tidy the place up a little.
They always come in too.
When I went downtown, whenever they'd drop a building or whatever, it got cold in the fall, the mice would just squirm. They would squirm all over the building. I mean, you'd find them in the sixth floor. We couldn't figure it out, but we got them.
All right.
Every fall.
Yeah.
And also with me.
Okay. If no one else has anything, I'd just, just like to wish everybody a blessed Christmas and a happy new year.
From all of us.
From everybody in Casco. And that's about it. We're up to adjournment.
I made a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Moved and supported to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Stand adjourned.